I would just say, my Lord Spirit, thank you for this day. Thank you for this prayer, and I'm blessed this meeting. For people listening, keep this faith with your words, spirit too. I'll try to help them in ways to protect them. And still, it was just stated to make your righteous decisions for our people. Amen.
Thank you. Counselor Arias, if you want to do it, please.
I'll thank you everybody for being here today. Just wanted to encourage everybody in here to keep an open mind. Listen to what they've said. Make decisions for the people involved. We've been doing this over four months, moving on. Have a positive day, and not a negative one. On what we're doing today, this is all important. What he knows how about my power. So, just to be loyal to you, have idea of you, to be able to make your own mind. Thank you.
And then, Counselor, Secretary, if you want to do the, well, call it's good to see you. But, thank you for that, for that. And again, Counselors, yeah, just, uh, just wanted to make notice that, and stick to yourselves, however that may be, you know, so, we'll have a couple of talks when I work today today. Because you know, having a personal responsibility is fine. So, yeah, it's definitely just a reminder to take care of yourselves, so. All right, Counselor, Secretary.
Good morning, everyone. I wanted to say thank you for your all wishes and prayers. I'm back at you. Round and round again, so thank you for everything. Wesley Hocken Senior. Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Here.
Ryan Jopinigo?
Here.
Gerald Canoria Junior? Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Present.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
There.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Here.
Ella John Carlo?
There.
George Dreamer Junior?
Present.
Julian Swaddedback? Richard Ironclad?
Here.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Sonya Luhan Weston?
Here.
Jackie Sears? Michael Carlo Senior?
Present.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Present.
Garco Still? Craig Dillon?
Here.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Here.
Uh, thank you, Counselors, with twenty members present, one excuse, thank you, Counsel. So now, we have improved the agenda by, uh, uh, by, Counselor, by, Chair Hockens. We're gonna improve the agenda, so we had a couple items to add.
Uh, before we approve the agenda, I think that's.
Um, but, uh. Good morning, my name is Aaron Clontz, I'm here at R, go to the morning to all the listeners and conference guests, all people out there, just a reminder to be comfortable there. People are listening out there, they wanna hear what you're saying, so please use your mic, so that the people can hear here on Zoom. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. So I know that, uh, go ahead, Chairman, if you want to ask those items, I'll let you clear it up, and I mean, I'm.
But Chairman, I got one from long order, I'd be, uh, I'd like to, two thirds, what this is coming on, has a deal that's, he talked to Conso with, and what exactly why my best company, and I think, um, the other two issues, um, Mr. Carlo will have.
Right, yeah, yeah. Um, so, Chairman, you want to do a motion on, uh, this?
Yeah, I'll give my vote for two thirds, or on.
Is there a second, Counselor? Uh, second by Counselor Rodriguez, Vice Chair Rodriguez. Um, Counselors, any discussion on that motion at this time, uh, to two thirds, uh, this coming's on to our council agenda? Hearing, receiving, online, uh, Secretary, if you will, we're right over. Um, please. Okay, um, okay, okay, uh, go ahead, Secretary.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonya Luhan Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garco Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Chairman, that passes twenty-four, three, we can't really say, you, uh, Chairman, if you have any items?
Yeah, we got two more, I got my turn over to, um, call, call.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor.
Yes, Mr., would you like me to read the heading and the two resolutions?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, the first resolution coming from Land Creed is a resolution of the O S T Tribal Council authorizing and approving the tribal president to initiate a group procedures in tribal court for the exclusion of non-member, non-Indian chain codes, codes from all tribal and within the state, and, uh, I have an Indian reservation, I believe we're one.
Second? Okay, uh, most have been made, seconded, uh, Counselors, making discussion on that motion in two thirds, that item on at this time. Um, hearing, or received on online, or, uh, seconded, if you want to.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yeah.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonya Luhan Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garco Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that motion passed unanimously, Ms. Counselor Carlo, your request.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the second resolution from Land Creed is a resolution of the Oklahoma Sioux Tribal Council, of the Oklahoma Sioux Tribe, appointing one member to the Oklahoma Sioux Parks and Recreation Board in motion.
Uh, motion is seconded, seconded by Counselor in the pocket. Uh, discussion on that motion at this time, two thirds, it's on, uh, or, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, good morning, Counsel, Executive Board, and to our visiting audience, and once on Zoom, I guess, I didn't hear, we didn't hear too well, Mr. Carlo, what, what's that, from that committee, the name?
It's just a resolution, the names will come later, resolution will point members of the council on that board.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor, any further questions, is to have, purpose is to add this two thirds motion on to the agenda? Um, hearing, received on online, or, uh, seconded, if you want to.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Yeah.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yeah.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Sonya Luhan Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garco Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, next Secretary, if you have that motion passed unanimously, this is one of the three events, um, is that all the items, uh, Chair, if you want us?
Uh, I think, uh, who's on, who's on, who's on, if you guys have any issue that hasn't been brought on today?
I have my hand.
That's, uh, Brian, was that, okay, so, yeah, no, I, I don't worry, so, so, this is, Commissioner, I don't want to, one more, sometimes. Um, so, thank you, Chairman Hockens, appreciate it, uh, Chairman, Jopinigo, if you want to, uh, I, I saw you get, get, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, we have one, it's the resolution of the Tribal Council, O S T Tribal Council appointing Duane Ross as Committee Program Monitor for the Health and Human Services Standing Committee, motion to two thirds.
Thank you, uh, so that must have been made, seconded by Counselor, uh, Vice Chair Elbow, a discussion, uh, Counselor Steel?
Morning, uh, Chairman, what if you carefully just did a blanket, um, approach to this with the other committees that do have their selections, just to, to put them all on the agenda at the same time, and then we could, uh, we could, uh, we could, uh, like, do the resolution separate, but just to put them all on the agenda, uh, you'd have to ask, uh, Brian, is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Because I know, I know, E B D's made a selection, and, uh, I don't know what other committees, but I'm just saying it'd be a lot easier.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Earl.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. The only problem, I see with that, because it has to be two thirds for each individual, and, um, what if somebody doesn't want to support that individual, or disagrees with that, that could hold up all?
Well, I'm just saying, if you, you don't know at the time it comes up, then, then the selection process, but I'm just saying, it would have been easier just to put it one blanket approach to it, just to put them all on, and for discussion, because that's all it is, where's the discussion?
Uh, Counselor, did you, Counselor, is that, okay, uh, okay, thank you, uh, thank you for that, uh, through discussion, the two thirds is item on. And then, um, I know that it's been amended, so, and, and, motion maker said it's okay, uh, Vice Chair Elbow, is it okay with you to amend it? Uh, Vice Chair Elbow, is it okay to amend it? Okay, um, so, it's, it's been motion seconded, it's been amended, so, you have, uh, all names for those committee chairs, to put their, uh, committee coordinators board, and, uh, we'll, uh, and we'll get those names, so. And Secretary, uh, when you're ready, uh, if you want to do a little bit?
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
No.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad? David Poyer? Sonya Luhan Weston? Um, Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garco Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor, motion passed unanimously, for one, uh, no, thank you, Counsel, and then, uh, Counselor Carlo, uh, thank you, uh, there's one more.
Can you have any? Uh, third, the resolution is a resolution of Oklahoma Sioux Tribal Council, the Oklahoma Co. update, Oklahoma Co. nation, Oklahoma Sioux Tribe of the Confederate, check out the show, update, great situation, environment, coordination, education, corporations between the Oklahoma Co. nation and United States of America, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the project, um, should be, this motion.
Okay, so motion is your second, second by Counselor Hockens, uh, any discussion that you can discuss on at this time? Uh, hearing, or received on, online, or, uh, seconded, if you want to.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yeah.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonya Luhan Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears? Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garco Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, that Counsel, uh, that, that motion passes unanimously, this is Counsel, uh, twenty-four zero against, thank you, uh, and, uh, Counselor Carlo, I think it'd be appropriate to, you, uh, make a motion to only use old school, the code of spelling, it's not the new age, so, I, so, I, 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 I'm kidding, so, um.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Yep, motion to approve the agenda, is there a second, second by Counselor Gray? Um, any further discussion on that, seeing that, and, uh, Secretary, uh, to, uh, to move.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder? Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Rodney Gray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonya Luhan Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlo Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garco Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor, that motion passes unanimously, uh, thank you, Counsel, uh, so, we'll go on to our first item of business, and, uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, the lawholder, Chair, uh, if you want to, uh, give us some background, uh, kind of make these conversations, thank you, uh, Chairman, Hockens.
Chairman, uh, the correct, uh, Council, I'd like to have them come in one at a time, to do the interviews, and, uh, if I may, a piece?
That's fine, and I'll, I'll be up there in time, so, uh, the candidates who are here to interview, uh, for chief police prosecutors, associate judges, um, traditionally in the past, that we, when we do this interview process, you'll get five minutes up here to make your statement, um, take questions from the councils, and if you, uh, do we have, want to have a closing statement, Counselor, or just the five minutes? This, uh, closing statement, five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, five minutes, so, so you'll get five minutes, um, if there's additional questions, um, you know, you'll answer those when, when, uh, but just go up here to where we're at, and, uh, feel free to, uh, to, to sit with the council, you know, making statements, and, and all timing, and, uh, I think we have a list up here. Okay. He was, uh, shall, uh, if you want to come up here and explain, LSU passed out a list, um. Okay, so, so we have four people who are chief of police, I believe, and then, um, there's also, uh, okay, we'll just take them in order, because, uh, we have, uh, human resources, chief of police, um, Marvin, and, and, uh, one, who might want, so, and is it okay if there are any, uh, Chairman Hockens, is that, is that, all right?
Yeah, we, uh, we can go, uh, we went on applicant, uh, go, uh, uh, we'll just put the list, and then I'll have the rest of them wait outside, and we'll go ahead and call them on, and.
Okay, that was fun, um, so, if, if the applicants, uh, want to wait outside, then we'll call you in, one by one, um, I know that there's, uh, also, uh, H R, I'm sure we have, it's all this, but, um, and the first one, we have Mr. Marvin Badum, so Marvin, if you want to, I think, ground reverse on that by second, so, uh, Counselor, we're.
Mr. Chair, I like, I like, I like, the motion, that we go into, take extension.
Go into extension.
I'll second.
Okay, so the first motion made, seconded by Counselor, and by course, to go on to executive, um, any discussion on that, Counselor? Hearing, received on, online, or, uh, seconded, if you want to.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jopinigo Senior?
No.
Gerald Canoria Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior? Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior? Rodney Gray? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Swaddedback? Richard Ironclad?
No.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonya Luhan Weston?
Um, Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Garco Still?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Counselors, that motion was passed, sixty-four, sixteen-four, four against, thank you, Counsel, uh, so we'll get everyone out, uh, Miss Ebo, if you want to, we're in executive, so, um.
Everybody else.
Okay, yeah, and they're getting, getting all, everybody else, everybody else, so.
Cora.
Okay, okay.
Chairman, uh, what, uh, the question that, you know, that, so, or, or, this, executive committee, and then the council, uh.